We'll call this meeting to order and stand for the plaid fifty feet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First part of this meeting is a public hearing, which is what we call to order. For the local option tax, this is the second meeting, this is the second and final public hearing. So if anybody would like to speak or ask questions, this would be the time to do that pertaining to the local option tax. Right?
I've been hearing word on the street, people are still thinking that vehicles, over the road vehicles, the tax applied to those is in this, and it's not. You know, I tell them, but they're thinking that it is.
It is not. Fuel isn't taxed, the only tax you pay for over the road vehicles is those state taxes.
Road use tax.
And what else, clothing isn't taxed, food obviously, the same things that aren't sales taxed.
Right.
Aren't, obviously, we're not, we don't get special dispensation to tax those. Car sales, that kind of thing like that are not taxed. It is, as we discussed in the last meeting, it will be a non-learning year, the first year if it passes because of COVID and how that affects everything. So we won't, we won't understand what the potential revenue is until the economy comes back, that's for sure. Are there any other questions?
I don't have a question, but something that we've really been lacking in our information is what do the online sales look like? How much is that going to add to any kind of revenue? I pulled a census, some Census Bureau information, and it gave me the last, the previous eight quarters of what online sales, retail online sales looks like. Obviously during COVID, it was up to a little over sixteen percent of retail is online right now. But the previous eight quarters, it's looking at a little over eleven percent of retail is through online purchases, through places like Amazon. That's a national average. The town of Fairhaven would see a little bit of that, so of the eighty-six thousand that is anticipated, you could see an increase in that number anywhere between two percent and maybe twenty percent, depending on how many people decide to purchase things online. We don't know what that looks like for us, and we don't have any information from other towns. People, the other towns aren't tracking this, so we don't even have a good comparison.
So they just get a check from the state and say thank you very much?
Yep, they just get a check. So they could kind of figure out based on what rooms and meals and alcohol looks like and then subtract out, but they're not. So just as a heads up, we did check into that, and it's, I think at eleven percent, it's an additional ten thousand dollars towards the bond.
Carl Scott had questions, and I answered them online, an email to him. I'm not sure I answered what he was asking. And so if we can keep the line of communication open with him and see if we can get that, his questions. I think he's thinking, my understanding, and I'm not sure, and I probably shouldn't put words in his mouth, but it sounds like he's thinking we would realize some of the sales tax to begin with that we don't realize, like goes to the state. So I'm confused by the questions, so I probably shouldn't say anything more than we should keep the line of communication open with him.
So what are you saying, that products purchased online and delivered in Fairhaven, having a delivery address in Fairhaven, we're actually getting credit for the sales tax that may have been charged in another town? And it's coming to Fairhaven if this all passes?
Yes, so if you order, and Amazon's obviously the biggest, yeah, so using them as an example, if they ship a new folder from California, they will charge the one percent sales tax, Vermont sales tax, in addition to the one percent, and then that money is then sent to the state and then subsequently to the town.
So this phenomenon that they're talking about, that the online sales for Christmas is already starting to boom, not that it affects the this year, but whether that's driven by COVID or driven by the mad desire to buy things online, if that is happening, then instead of other towns getting the credit for the tax, Fairhaven will?
We would, it would be additional revenue, yes.
Additional revenue, yeah. Okay, lots of plus.
So one thing Carl did ask, he asked, and I think this is what he was asking, what does it look like per hundred, per hundred dollars of assessed value on a home? You know, if you put the entire bond payment onto your,
He did ask that, yeah.
Yeah, onto your property tax, what's that look like? So with no other funding, if we added a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to property tax, it would be an eight point three cent increase per hundred dollars assessed value. It doesn't sound like a lot?
Eight cents?
Eight point eight three.
Eight point three.
Eight cents?
Eight cents, more than eight cents. So let's say, let's say you have a home on Pelkey Avenue, and it's valued at two hundred and ten thousand. You would see an additional hundred and seventy-four dollars in taxes each year, and that is a seven point eight percent increase in your property tax. Just, that's just with the bond payment included, that doesn't account for anything else, any other increases.
Every twenty thousand is a penny. That's almost exactly right, yeah?
I have a couple more numbers we didn't talk about, if you want to hear them. So we talked a little bit about the sewer rate last week. The current base rate for the sewer is sixteen dollars and thirty cents. If we add the bond payment, this is per quarter, that number will go up to sixty dollars and fifty cents per quarter, or an average, or two hundred and forty-two dollars per user annually.
Is that correct now? Because didn't, that was, the original was sixty-six, and then we went down a little bit because we've gotten low interest or no interest loan?
Yeah, we got the full, we got the full grant amount and the, the grant, the grant brought it down, and then the interest rate brought it down too, so it brought it down from whatever the original was to about six.
I thought we were sneaking down towards forty dollars.
Forty dollar increase. Yeah. So let's say again, you live on, just as an example, on Pelkey, your property tax would go up a hundred and seventy-four dollars if we drop it on the property tax, your water rate would go up two hundred and forty-two dollars a year if we drop it there. So those are, those are pretty hard numbers within a dollar or two.
Weren't we talking about forty dollars if we started payments in this cycle? So we had an extra year of payments?
No, is that what, is that what stuck in my mind, the forty dollars? It could be.
I think if you, if you go, like, say it's a twenty-year term, if you can bump it out to like twenty-one or twenty-two, it significantly drops the increment. It doesn't seem like it should, but it does drop it down some.
Get into the principal order.
Well, isn't it that it knocks it down before you have much interest in the first couple of years?
Yep. Yeah.
So what is this, what's the, what's the process if it's voted down?
Well, if it's voted down, then the next, the next step would be to incorporate it in our budget discussions, if that's the will of the select board, or push it onto the sewer owners, the sewer users. Totally, I mean, that's a decision that this board has to make, water and sewer commissioners.
So it doesn't have to go through, I would assume you're going to have a public discussion, but it doesn't have to go to a public discussion? Well, I guess it does in the, in the fact that if you do push it onto the tax rate, the budget will either be,
It will be voted down, right? It's, yeah. That's our, that's what we have for options unless somebody comes up with another magic revenue builder.
But we're, we're not up against the fence until two years, roughly, two years.
Jeff's, Jeff's talking about what we did before when we added, when we, for the water project, we started a year early, so we got,
A portion, yeah.
A little built up there, and that was less owners. Sixty bucks a month on people's, on people's sewer, sewer rate or base rate is going to not be friendly.
Sixty a quarter, Bob, this particular.
Excuse me? What did I say, a month, yeah, yeah, that would be ugly.
Yeah, don't shock people anymore than we have to.
Did you have any other numbers or?
No, I brought some, some information expecting some questions, but no, those are, those are the big ones. If folks look at their tax bill, they can figure out just by adding, under the municipal rate, just by adding that eight cents to the, to the total and multiplying out, they can, they can see the impact.
Given, yeah, that's if we pulled the line on our budget, on the budget, the rest of the budget numbers.
Yeah, that's if it's a flat budget.
Yeah, that's, that's in addition to whatever our, our rate becomes.
Yeah.
I think it would be on top of the fixed increases for wages and stuff like that insurance myself, but at least that much.
Any other questions? If not, we will conclude this, this public hearing and call the regular board meeting to order. And we will start with amendments to the agenda.
So can we remove fuel bids? The bids haven't come in yet, we thought they would get here.
Remove what?
Fuel bids.
We will just,
F twelve F.
We will just push that forward.
Okay.
Approval of the minutes, first September twenty-second, which is the regular meeting, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-second as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of our special meeting on the twenty-ninth, as written.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additions, deletions, corrections, there was, Carl Scott once again mentioned that he, he was here and he did, he did speak.
It's in there.
There wasn't much.
I just read them this afternoon. It's on the first page.
It's on the first page.
It states that he was there.
Well, I know it's there, just a minute. Mr. Scott.
Yeah, Mr. Scott commented that the burden might be placed on property taxes and discussed the Killington situation where an option tax was partially repealed, is all, is what, is what they said, yeah?
He had more to say about, about, there were questions, there were more questions, I thought, and he thought too. So I don't have a specific.
I know he talked quite a bit about the Killington thing.
I asked him to give us an idea of what he wanted, I haven't seen anything yet, so I guess we'll leave it at that, and if he, if he gets something else, we can always make an addition, addendum.
Was it, oh, then,
Is that all right with everyone?
Peg wasn't here, did you record it, was it recorded?
It was.
I think his question was of the eighty-six thousand returning to Fairhaven from the one percent tax revenue, how much are Fairhaven residents taxed and sending to the state to receive, to receive in return?
Yeah.
And I don't believe there's, when, when you pay tax, you don't separate whether you're a resident or non-resident when they're paying tax, so I don't know how we can get that, is the short answer.
Well, they take thirty-five percent or thirty percent, thirty percent, thirty.
I think, I think what he really wanted to know was, are we going to clear the thirty percent without a, out of count revenue? Are you going to make more than thirty percent?
That would,
Otherwise, what's the point? I think that was his argument. Right?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I guess so, I,
Don't want to put words, I, I hear what you're saying, Jeff, I just don't want to put words in his mouth, that's,
He didn't want, I think, and I am putting words in his mouth, but I think he didn't want to see more money come out of Fairhaven just to pay the state thirty percent.
Well, we're, yeah, and I never did get that argument, I mean, I don't understand it, it's additional revenue.
He's working on the house right across the street from me. I'm probably going to see him tomorrow, I can ask him,
Yeah.
what he meant and what he wanted in the minutes.
Tell him if you just,
And then I, I'll, can I just add it, or do I need to go through here?
We should go through here and just,
But the analysis that I think he was looking for, we don't have the ability, the numbers to analyze, is the, is the short answer.
At least the question should be, his, his contribution should be in it.
I didn't, I didn't understand that when he was speaking the other night, if he said it.
So at this point, we will, how we want to do that, do you want to table this, the acceptance of these minutes? And then we'll see what we get from Carol, if we get nothing, then we'll just proceed to the next meeting. Is that all right with everyone?
Sure.
So motion to table the twenty-ninth minute?
Yeah.
Yep, and I'll second that.
Motion, what did he say, motion to table?
Table the minutes from the special meeting on the twenty-ninth.
All those in favor of that?
Aye.
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 These three-person boards are easy.
Only, only if you agree.
Geez, I could have really thrown some anchors out a few years ago. Okay, five minutes for public comment.
Discussing Halloween plans for the town, I think that under the circumstances, with COVID- nineteen and when it's all yellow in Washington County, that we get a lot of people from Whitehall over here, kids, and the crowds that we have on Carnarvon Street and Second Street, are we doing trick-or-treat this year, Joe?
I was going to talk about that during my managing report.
Well, I'm not in favor of it because kids are too close together now.
Washington County went green today, they're going back and forth, I just checked them out.
But anyway, I, I don't think it's a good idea myself. If they want to, if people want to do something on their own, that's fine, but I don't think the town should be promoting.
Well, to be perfectly honest with you, we don't for a moment, it just happens.
Trucker treat?
I mean, the trucker treat we do, but the, the regular trick-or-treating, we don't really, there's not sanction, the only thing we do is kind of control.
I've talked to some parents, and they're not going all of it, I should,
Yeah, I mean, I hate to do it, I hate to say don't do it, but I mean, I don't, I don't know what our jurisdiction is in that particular case, if somebody wanted to,
I just think that the town shouldn't sponsor it, that's all.
Yeah, well, I don't think we should either, I agree with you there, John, for sure. I just, I'm not sure that, I don't know. I suppose, I don't know what our, what our jurisdiction would be.
This is for Halloween, normal Halloween?
Yeah. I mean, if somebody wanted to go put their kids out there and go door to door, and somebody opened the door and gave them candy,
Isn't it, we do, there's a rule of thumb, if the light's on?
Is that like porch light on or not?
Right, if the porch light's not on, you have to, the kids have, the kids and parents have to respect the code.
Is everybody going to be wearing gloves or Santa Claus candy? And they're going to change their gloves every time they have a different bunch of kids coming?
And I think maybe the only thing we could do is, is post something on, on our Facebook page and the front page forum or whatever, saying that we don't recommend.
Or also, you could say, please observe, common sense Halloween,
Social distancing?
Social distancing and,
I mean, yeah, we don't recommend it, and if you do do it, please observe all the cautions you can.
And we can probably list a number of the cautions, but that's not an exclusive list, just, just to include,
We all know that a Halloween mask is not a COVID mask, so.
We're encouraging everybody to be doctors and nurses this year.
Yeah, a lot of doctors and nurses this year.
So Dr. Levine at the state, and I sent out an email asking if anybody had heard anything, and I guess Levine at the state said he does not have a problem with trick-or-treat as long as precautions are taken, which is masks, gloves, the, the normal thing we've been, that's been beaten to us.
Then let's post that, post his recommendations and post, you know, our concurrence, call it even.
John, were you talking about like the event that we did on Main Street?
Yes.
That the town, I didn't think of something,
Trick-or-treat.
So that's what I think he referred to, you weren't talking about the house-to-house, or you were?
Well, if people go house-to-house, there's not much you can do about it, but to actually sponsor an event, I don't think we should do that. Those kids were all down there, and they were shoulder to shoulder down there.
You were going to talk about that later?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll continue this discussion a little while.
Candy's an inoculant, isn't it?
Pardon?
Candy's an inoculant, isn't it?
Yes.
I don't think so.
Yes, it is.
If it was our president, it would be eaten by the mother of the baby.
Candy corn particularly, in case you,
Candy corn, that's your recommendation?
That would shock a tuber, or?
All right, let's move on to, Department head reports, chief?
The grant came in, I don't know if Joe was going to bring it up, the other grant on the radio grant and the fingerprint grant, the forty-one thousand, that got sent to us for somebody here to sign, I don't know if it's going to be the board, or Joe, or Suzanne, or whoever the financial agent will be, but we got, if you remember, I talked to you guys about applying, we applied, we got the conditional letter, so that came in, was it yesterday? We got the, we all got the thing, so that will be here once it's executed. I'm not sure the time plan on what that would be to allow the, to actually acquire the equipment, but, again, we would start that process of finally upgrading the digital that we've been trying to do for a couple of years. And that's no match. The big thing I want to talk about was Sean was involved in a motor vehicle accident on Friday night on River Street. We got called, the sergeant and myself responded from home, right near Howard's intersection as you come up that hill on River Street, motorcycle was speeding, going eastbound, Sean was coming back into, into the village, and the motorcycle crossed the center lane and hit him right square center at Durango, and the operator went down over the bank. The operator initially got up and was yelling and screaming at Sean, and Sean was shook up, he thought the guy was dead. The guy ended up having a leg injury, I don't have any updates on it, Castle and P investigated it. I have some photos that clearly show Sean couldn't have gotten any farther without going off the road, trying to get away from him. I know I heard a rumor on Main Street that our car hit the motorcycle, it was not the case, he did everything he could possibly to get away from him, short of going off into the bushes himself, but the positive side of that, I think we're going to get more for that Durango through the insurance policy than we would have got some of that, so it might be, two-hundred-and-six-thousand miles is officially dead, so.
How's Sean doing now?
Sean was shook up, we spent some time with him before we went home, I sent him home Friday night, and we did on-call. Just, I didn't want him out about, he had a little mishap of his own car when he was leaving the town bar, and he scraped up the side, all shook up, so. We got him, we got him calmed down, talked to him for a while, we hooked him up with a crisis worker, the on-call crisis worker, talked to him over the weekend, talked to him again today, he seems to be fine, he's working now, I talked to him when he came on shift tonight, so. He's good, I don't have an update on the motorcycle operator, but unfortunately, the car is ruined, and there's no indication that the officer would be at fault or liable for the accident. Back on to Halloween, I did meet with the IBC committee with the idea of promoting people decorating their homes, not promoting going out trick-or-treating, but the IBC and, and us talked about just trying to get, promote people to decorate for Halloween and fall to kind of make, we call it a scooptacular destination, that people could come here and drive around and see all the houses that were decorated. We have a few pretty nice ones in town now, so we were just trying to do something that would be COVID-safe, and not, you know, you're not going to get out and look, you just drive by, and so we were trying to just promote something positive in the community to do. It would be a little more positive for 2020 this year. The food drive is on track, depending on COVID restrictions and COVID changes, we're looking to right around opening day of deer season where we normally do it. Dale Curver just started his thirteenth year with the department. We got the three LiDars in, three speed measuring devices, they're light, they're small handheld units, and four boxes of flares, it was sold at about thirty-five hundred dollars, that was paid for from Governor's Safety Safety Grant from last year. We had to spend the money by the thirtieth of September, we had the funds, I waited, we had approval to buy the three units, so we all, we took possession of them last week, and the flares that are currently in my office. I think that's what I got. That's on the agenda.
It is, okay.
Oh, we will start with some correspondence. Mr. Neil Robinson wanted to send a letter, I guess this was pertinent to the public hearing, but he wanted his little, his letter read aloud about the one percent option tax. He says, and this is Neil, he says, gentlemen, I ask the following question, after having read and heard some voters concerned regarding the one percent tax proposal causing people to avoid Fairhaven if approved, where have you ever, where have you ever heard the majority of people not taking a vacation or shopping in any state because their meals, lodging, sales, et cetera, taxes were too high? And he thanks you for considering this. Back into the big pile of correspondence, we had two weeks ago, Pauline, Pauline on Five and Half Carnarvon, we sent her some information about composting, uh, that she requested. Uh, Mr., uh, I can't read his last name, Ray on Main Street, um.
Pankowski.
Pankowski, thank you. Uh, he sent an apology letter. Um, he says he thought the problems with the manhole, uh, towards the top of the cover, though his house still shakes inside, uh, the manhole doesn't rattle, so he apologized for, for the confusion. And I have three, uh, requests for, I had three letters and three requests for, uh, sewer abatement. I did deny all three of them. Two of them were for watering their gardens, much very similar to the, uh, Mr. Workman from four weeks ago. Uh, and one gentleman wanted his hot tub, uh, reimbursed. Um. I don't know if the board has an opinion, but these are similar to the other ones that have been denied, so I denied them out of hand.
They have a right to appeal to us.
They can do, they can appeal to the board. But they should do.
All right. If they want, if they want to continue.
How many gallons is the hot tub?
Not much.
Three. I know, but it could be eight person or four person.
Three hundred and fourteen gallons.
Right. Right. It's not much. I think it's three fifty minus three fifty, I think, I think. It's not that much.
Um, the information from Highway, uh, we've taken delivery of the winter sand. Uh, Scotch Hill, we're almost done with it. They'll be done with, they'll finish up the, the construction this week.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
It looks like they've ditched along by where the trees we were talking about cutting. It looks like those trees are stable, which I wouldn't have bet on. I didn't bet on it. I've been arguing with Roberts for two years now. Uh, what are we doing?
The, so what's, there's no more tree cutting, uh, in that area. What's cut is cut and then what's left is still growing. Um, they didn't cut, they didn't have to cut the bank back as far as they originally thought they would. Um, they brought the young lady out from Rutland Regional, who's in charge of the grant program, and she's very pleased with the, uh, with the progress.
That's good. That's good. I'm glad, I'm glad. Those trees, they don't have a lot of life left in them, but they have a little bit, and it was nice to see that they don't have to go.
Yeah. Well, it's nice to work with the homeowner too, you know, it's, you hate to cause too much hate and discontent.
Well, yeah, you know. Maybe he'll say thank you.
Uh. Aaron is, him and his crew are prepping for winter work. Uh, the, I was down there the other day and they were getting the trucks ready, greasing them up, uh, getting the plows moving and painted. Uh, and they're going to have those trucks, uh, undercoated, oil undercoated. Uh, water, water fl- waterline flushing is finished.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are we going full, full, uh, bore ahead with, uh, the brine or salt?
The, so they're gonna, we're still using brine and they're gonna use the brine as pre-treating, as pre-treatment, but they're also using a little bit of salt.
Okay.
Both.
So, then, yeah, okay, so the salt will come after the storm.
Yeah, if, if there's a, yeah, if there's a storm, you can pre-treat and it keeps the roads pretty bare, but if it starts to pile up, you can't spray the brine on the snow.
So, Aaron is still in lockstep with the previous years?
Yeah. And he's had some experience with this, uh, I guess in the past, so, um, it sounds like.
Here or in Poland?
In Poland. No, this is, I think this is the first time we tried here.
Well, we did last year.
Well, yeah, not counting last year. I mean, this is the first, uh, first time.
Right.
Uh, sewer, uh, we have quotes, we finally got the quotes for the replacement of controls at Adams and Academy Pump Station. Um, hopefully we're gonna bring that to the board at the next meeting.
Academy and what?
Academy and Adam Street.
And Adams?
Pump stations. Uh, and we're still working, uh, working on the wastewater plant upgrade. They're at the sixty percent mark right now, pushing towards a ninety percent review. Moving on to town manager stuff. We were awarded a grant for, I think it was twenty-four thousand dollars to upgrade our technology through the COVID, um, COVID grants. Um, this is a no-match grant. It's gonna replace almost all the computers in town hall. Um, two for the water department. We're actually gonna get a laptop for the boardroom instead of me using this one. And we're gonna get a screen instead of a projector, and then everything will be able to be bumped from here to there, so we're.
The screen is in this, a television screen or television or a, a white screen?
No, no, television.
Television.
Yeah.
I, I thought we just upgraded all computers.
Just, sorry, just. I think we bought the listers, uh.
Oh.
Computers.
We bought computers for the listers, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they're, they're good to go. And town clerk also has a new computer. Oh, the fuel tank will be closed, or starting to be closed tomorrow. Fabian's is, uh, will be here in the morning. Park lighting and, uh, parking lot reconstruction, that's moving forward. Uh, we're doing the at-the-ready process for the, for the, um, engineer, the design engineer. Um, it's sitting with Jim right now. Once he does his final review, uh, we'll talk to the state and see if they concur with the choice, and then we can make a, uh, an offer to that organization. Uh, USDA finally gave us the go-ahead for construction here. Hopefully we get that RFP out soon. Lewis Lane, uh, those letters went out last Friday. Uh, they probably got them, I would imagine, yesterday or today. Sean. School payment was in this packet. That was a, a big one. Water shut, uh, pink slips are in the mail and water shut offs will be starting. Um, some folks in town have not paid for over a year. Um, we wanted to wait until the whole COVID crisis had passed and the, um, state of emergency was lifted. But the way it's going now, we're almost double in arrears as we normally would be. Um, so we, we had to make a move and this, this was the move.
So, usual customers or are we looking at a lot of people you've never seen before?
Uh, most of them is our, our usual suspects. And, uh, little height flushing is done. And, uh, Grant Technology, oh, uh, our Town Experience Mod, which I think I let you guys know before, we're, we're down, which is great. We're under one, which means we'll get a, a seven percent discount on our insurance this year. Every little bit helps. I did ask the board about, uh, fuel donations. I think it was last week via email. Um, it, it turns out that we, we still want to do this, but, um, the state is requiring all fuel tanks to be inspected before we can drop any fuel, and that is cost prohibitive. We would be on the hook to do a bunch of inspections on under twelve fuel tanks. Um, so it turns out we can't, uh, donate fuel.
You know what?
It, it's, it's such a shame.
We're not trucking the fuel, okay?
We're not.
Why, why didn't we donate it through like Fairview Concern or, or a holler?
We gotta have a storage, storage for it. Is that the, is that the catch?
Yeah, no, well, the, the, the holler would be happy to take it and do, do the donations himself, but then he would have to do the inspections.
Well, they're doing that now. They have that responsibility now.
He does, but for, yes, but not for his, these aren't his normal customers on his normal route, so if we go and do a free dump of fuel, now he's on the hook to do that, do that inspection. And now somebody has to pay for that inspection.
And, well.
Well, my, my suggestion.
There. I mean, he sees the, the tank.
No, he doesn't.
And they red tag. What?
He just sees the fill.
Well, no, that's not true, John. My brother and I have a house in Castleton and it was, the tank red, uh, tagged because, you know, the driver went down. He had to go down and look in the, and look at the tank. Uh, and he looks at the fill port and the, and the vent tube and they're obligated to do it. It's part of their job. Now, I mean, I.
Can we donate it? Who knows? Can we, at school, the, what is?
So I called the library and they had just filled up their tank.
Tank has everything.
I know. And our guys will dump a little bit at our, uh, into our tank, but, um.
My suggestion would be to pump this tank, come up eight inches from the bottom and pump the fuel and put it in a new tank.
Well, the new tank is full. The new tank is full. And the, so the guy that did it said he would not recommend putting that old fuel again into that new tank. You're still gonna get the bacteria and sediment.
Well, if you pump.
So why would you pump it in somebody else's tank?
You're pumping fair enough out the bo- if you pump fair enough out the bottom, you're not gonna gain a sludge. I mean, we're down, our pipes have gotta be within three inches from the bottom of that tank to begin with, where we're sucking fuel. So if we went in and sucked down to five inches or even six inches, you know? I don't see why you'd have, the fuel isn't bad fuel, it's just. It's all new fuel. I mean, it was all new fuel last year, and as long as you don't disturb it, derail it, you're not gonna be adding any. I say we pump, go down to six inches and pump it and put it in the tank or do something. I don't know what, I don't know what you can do. I mean, everything's full.
Yeah, everything's full. Um, he, the, the gentleman doing the job said he would buy it from us. Uh, but because it's old fuel, he says you give us fifty cents a gallon.
Not old fuel. It's new fuel. Come on. It's fuel we put in last year, so it's not old fuel.
Yeah.
We did call the governor's office. Well, I said, I, I called the governor's office trying to find a workaround because it was, it was a really great idea. Um, but no, they had, they offered no help.
Really? They said, sorry, it is what it is and you gotta do the inspection.
Call, call Fairview Concern, see if they wanna be the liaison between a holler and just say, we, we have fuel and, and are you willing to take this on and deal with it? If not, then we'll have to do something else.
They call, they may be able, they may have people who already have, they may know people who've already gotten their tanks upgraded.
Somehow they're, they're doing it, right? Don't they do fuel assistance?
Uh, they do. I don't know if they do, if they've got a program for the, for the upgrade. Maybe, um, who's, who's the outfit in Rutland County that does the up, the, the house upgrades?
Brock.
Brock.
Oh, I'll give Brock a call.
Maybe they have.
Or how about somebody just taking, that's got a waste oil burner?
Well, then.
What about the churches?
That may be, the churches, yeah. There's gotta be somebody.
The guy gets somebody to put it into them.
That's the thing. It, that's, it's not a matter of finding a location. It's a matter of having it legally done, having it legally done.
This guy offered us fifty cents a gallon for it, but don't you think he's gonna sell it for a dollar seventy-five when it's on the truck? He is.
Maybe.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, if he wanted.
Up the price a little bit more, get the buck out of them, fine, but not fifty cents a gallon.
Yeah.
John's got a good idea. Somebody to waste all the burner, they can burn it. Remember the old Fairview Dodge building? I think they were running one of them at one point.
Dave Young used that one. I don't know if he does it anymore, but, but I mean, then we're, you know, I don't.
What's your wallet's got one? Him, yep, the, wiggles. Yeah, but Rod Ether has one too.
Yeah, but then we're giving it to, uh, this, you're not doing it as an assist, a fuel assistance, you're doing it as giving it to a business.
I'd rather sell it, I'd rather sell it for fifty cents per gallon to somebody in town than I would to the, to somebody who's just gonna keep it and resell it or whatever.
Yeah, that's a good idea too. Yeah.
There are options, somebody.
We gotta get it done because he's something to take the tank out, right?
When are they, when are they taking it?
When?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, my only concern is it's gonna co- if it costs us money to take it out when we can make money, even though it's only fifty cents. I think we, we missed the opportunity. We, we've gotta get, it's gotta be taken out in order to close the tank, and it's gonna happen. It's such a short time frame.
How many gallons are we talking about?
Uh, anywhere between a thousand and fifteen hundred, depending on where the, you know, junk starts.
Right.
So the, the guy said he would pump it and hold it for a week till we found something to do with it. Mike's, Mike's Fuel's has been really great to work with. He's, uh, you couldn't ask for a nicer guy.
Don't up his price a little bit. We'll give it to him.
We'll see what we can do.
It can't, it doesn't hurt. It's free to, it's, it's free to. My tank's good. I just filled mine. I'm out of there on it. Damn it.
And.
It'd be a conflict.
Yeah, just bring it to my house. No problem. Um, we did get it.
The propane, Joe.
We did get a, we did get a request from, uh, the mayor to hold a Halloween spooktacular in the park. She still wanted to do a, uh, a parade, a socially distanced parade for the children, as well as do a socially distanced trunk or treat, which John alluded to earlier. I told her I would talk to the board about it tonight.
They did that one another year, didn't they? With everybody just parked on Main Street, the trunks open?
Yeah, last year and the before.
The difference between the two years, that's my problem. I don't think we should sanction, we should be sanctioning anything.
There was, there was one thing about the trucker, trucker's trick or trunk last year that was suggested that if we did it this year, that we do it in the free parking area, so the kids wouldn't be crossing out here in front and then again going across Main Street to get over to the cars and stuff.
So, yeah. What's everybody's, uh?
On the Halloween spooktacular?
Yeah.
I, we talked earlier, Bob, about is if you, when it comes to Halloween, as long as you social distance, wear a mask, what, I'm, they have to live to the guidelines that are out there.
I, I just can't see doing it.
As a health officer, I can't see doing it.
Okay.
I disagree. I, I mean, there's a lot of people that's still gonna give out candy.
Yeah.
Are they wearing donuts here?
I don't know, and I really didn't ask them, but I mean, there's a, if the candy's wrapped, if the candy's wrapped, what difference does it make?
Yeah.
I mean, if they're giving out donuts or baked goods, it's a different story, but, um. Well, it's touching it. It's touching the outside of the hand. It, it's, it's the actual physical contact is the problem. All we have to do is just tell everybody if you're gonna give out candy, you gotta wear gloves.
They gotta change their gloves every time this person comes through.
I think the difference is, for me, is town sponsored and not.
What, what makes this any different than when we, earlier this summer in the middle of COVID, we had the barbecue and everything else down there?
Very true.
It's, it's for us to say, yes, go there, but now say, no, seems like, and I, and I'm just saying, why would we give them a different, why would we give them a different answer? Now, I could see if, if our infection rate had gone way up and the direction from the state was, but I'm, that's not what I'm hearing the direction from the state is.
But the possibility exists if with all these kids going shoulder to shoulder up on those streets.
Then, then we do the same thing we talked about earlier, that, that we post the conditions and how people should act and. And not, and not support any of it. Let them do it on their.
What they, what they decide to do.
We, we will be sanctioning it because, because the dog is somehow officially.
Right, it's, the mayor's doing it. I don't know why not.
The mayor's, the mayor's there, so that will, that'll say we sanction it, but there is a good point. We did do the, the other thing, you know.
And I also hear your concerns, John, and what I'd say is I'd like to think that we would be there if, if our worst fears and everyone started crowding together, shoulder to shoulder. I'd like to think we would have some kind of presence that would, and we would remind people about social distancing, the need to wear a mask and, and the safety precautions. But I'm, I'm pretty sure.
That's why, uh, Rollin City canceled their bird.
Have they canceled it now?
Yes, they do.
That's a little different situation, John. You got thousands of people in Rollin.
How many kids do you think you got out here?
You're not gonna have a thousand.
If you got a thou- if you got five hundred kids, it's just the same problem.
On the streets though, we, we can't regulate what people decide to do on that side. If they're out and about, we can't even stop people from regging their, our masks. We have no, and we can remind people, but as far as if parents choose to go out and run, set the lights on, they're out and about. We can't stop them. We all try to, to make it safe as we always normally do. And we can remind people, but as far as if parents choose to go out and run to the lights on, they're out and about. We can't stop them. We all try to to make it safe as we almost normally do. But I don't know if we.
I think all you can do is patrol the streets like you always have and. Let them do what they want.
I think Bob, I think you're right, Bob. Just let people know that we're we gotta follow the COVID guidelines. And we're not promoting it.
All you gotta do is put something out. If you're gonna hand out candy, wear gloves. Keep your six foot distance. Wear a mask. Most of the kids are wearing masks anyways, so.
Give them a not COVID mask if it's Halloween mask.
You tell them to quarantine their candy for fourteen days.
I don't want to meet them.
Most most parents wouldn't want to be home quarantined and they're given for fourteen days.
So let them go with the usual restrictions. Is that okay with everyone? Consensus of the board?
Still have one meeting or two before you get there in case something goes crazy.
Right, if something something happens between now and then, it might change your.
Just specify as of now. Stay with the regulations and if something comes up before then. We can change your mind.
I will let the mayor know. What else?
Uh, that's that's it?
I don't see any old business. So new business is the solar improve proposal.
Yes. Uh, so Pete Geis from M H G Solar got back in touch. He is uh, interested again in providing the town with solar power. Uh, it's the same contract that our lawyer looked at previously, with the exception that now instead of having to pay penalties and and be locked in for ten or. I forget how long it was, ten or twenty years. Um, there's a six month notice where the town can just say, okay, we're we're done with you and we can move on.
Sixty day notice.
I six month, hundred and eighty days. Yeah, I there's a typo in the uh, in the sheet.
What we got for email?
Yeah. So if the board is interested, I will uh, I can pull the contract, have it reviewed one more time and we can discuss at the next.
You know, I mean, we gave him a pretty solid note last thing I hear, I thought.
Oh, uh, I thought it was because of the time the timeframe.
I thought it was because of a lot of other things, too.
Well, why don't you give us a why don't you give us the uh, Don Jard again and. And have the lawyer look at it. I I thought we were pretty adamant that we didn't want to nail it.
There's gotta be something going. I I mean. Why can't he sell us anybody else? This is the third time he's been here to us. Come on, there's gotta be somewhere. Something can't be right.
It's availability of solar sites, Jay.
But he's got a site. I mean, he's he's the one that's gonna go up on the quarry.
We were talking about the airport or the dunk. Is that the same guy?
No.
Oh, it's different?
I think it's a different. I think it's a different guy, but he's going up to uh.
He went up to the quarry.
He's doing the quarries.
To the quarries? Oh, so this is the guy that was going to the quarries. Okay, and reclaiming the quarries.
Yeah.
So he's looking to sell us power? Is that?
He wants us to. He wants us to lock in. I think the biggest thing was locking into a long term contract for, I don't know if it was like fifteen. It was like fifteen years. Yeah, but it was fifteen or twenty years, but it was like fifteen percent total was the savings or something. I found that mistaken.
It was it was pretty good savings, but I think Bob, if I remember right, he if we elected to get out of the agreement early, he wanted some of the savings back paid back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, maybe that maybe that was what the problem was, no matter when we got out.
So that that clause was was stripped out as well as the locking in for twenty years. Now we can hop out anytime. So.
If he's pulling all this stuff out, he must be getting desperate. That's what I'm saying.
Let's see what he's got to offer. I mean, let's see the contract. I if it's if we're not. We're not locked in. And we're not paying any penalties. It it's more. It looked but it sounds better.
It's much more valid.
Yeah.
I think it was like seventeen thousand or a year. It well, I I forget what the amount was, the savings that we.
Well, it's worth looking again, but you know, I can take five minutes to read the contract. Yeah, and uh, see if it's.
America gets better credits by going to municipalities and schools on the other end. His wife is coming back.
It may be that. And if that's the case, maybe we just gotta. He's got a sharpener, a pencil or whatever, but let's let's see what he's got to offer.
If it's a net metered array, I from what I understand, the net metered customers are starting to drive.
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll get the contract looked at and bring it back.
And the net metering itself is is getting cut back every year.
The incentives for it. The incentives to do uh, net metered arrays, uh, the incentives to do the commercial, the large arrays don't seem to be. Being cut back. It's just the net meter.
I'll be darned.
Is what the P U C is discussing.
Isn't that interesting?
I don't.
Not surprising. See what you got to offer. Okay, then let's more to come on that. American Legion requests for funds.
So uh, Fairhaven, the American Legion Post forty-nine, we did their their parking lot this summer. Um, they're requesting just about five thousand dollars for stone uh, for the repair from the town. Reason being, they say there was a sewer pipe underneath underneath their driveway that had settled, which caused a bump. So they would like the town to foot to share in the in the cost.
I say no. First of all, that whole job was way overdone. I mean, there all there was was a ditch just wide. This guy cut twelve feet out of pavement and he hauled stuff out. There was no reason to do that. There was nothing wrong with a filled with ground at that pipe. And we it wasn't nothing to do with us to begin with. This is a private contractor, a private operation putting in the water line. We didn't have anything to do with the water line.
The only thing is, we took the.
We took it over.
We took the water line over, but we didn't.
Didn't do the work.
We didn't do the work.
Not do any of it.
I think it's a stretch to think that we owe them money.
I do, too. I I say no. I just. And if they wanted, the other thing, too, if they wanted us. To help pay for some of this, then we should have been part of the people that are gonna come in and do the job. This job was way overshot. I'm telling you right now. There was no reason to dig that down the way he dug it. And as wide as he did it.
Was it? I don't have a good memory of it, but was it intentionally swaled?
There was a swale.
I think there was.
So what I was, if it was a swale, my concern come spring thaw is where's all that water gonna go? Well.
Or Bob's.
Right into Bob's. So I'm not sure if it was probably intentionally a bump, at least the way I saw it.
It wasn't as deep. It wasn't as deep at the time. There was always a swale there for the water to run down.
And it has.
It had sunk a little bit. But you're talking thirty years.
Right.
Great. How how long ago did Skyline put that in, Bob?
Ninety ninety-two or three.
Yeah, so I mean, come on, thirty years, you get a little bit of settlement and you want the town to pay for it?
Actually, they didn't really have to do it. They could have built it back up and then.
Well, they didn't even have to dig it out as far as I'm concerned. They could have paved over it and had it done. I make a motion. We don't do anything.
There a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
And that was a motion to not pay.
Not to do it.
Cemetery deed?
Yes, one cemetery deed tonight. Let me see if I can find the information.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a cemetery deed for. Looking for the person's name. Ag- Agnes Plant. And it's for lot number fifty-four south in section eleven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Sold. Fuel tank loan resolution. So when we started.
Yep, this is where you remind me to sign over on the right hand side.
No problem. Sign on the right hand side.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get the the name Agnes. That's okay. When it comes back.
Done. Sorry. Uh, so when we started the fuel tank, the replacement project, our original estimate was for just over twenty thousand. We came back uh, and chose to bury a fuel tank in the backyard in the in the back of the building instead of store that fuel under the building. Uh, which increased the cost. Uh, we had to go back to the to the state to borrow a little bit more money. Um, and this is a resolution to borrow that money. This resolution is for twenty-six thousand dollars at zero percent interest, paid back over five years.
I'll I'll make the motion for the loan in prison.
Second.
I'll second it.
Do they understand what we're doing?
This is this takes care of the entire. Operation.
The entire thing.
Okay, so we're not having to come back. Two weeks from now and say we need more money?
No, this is it.
Okay.
It's a resolution to what?
Loan resolution.
A loan resolution. So you just signed a loan resolution?
Yeah. For the fuel.
And this supersedes supersedes anything we did before?
No, this is in addition to.
Wait a minute. Wait. We're adding another twenty-six thousand? On top of the.
On top of twenty.
I thought we're doing six thousand extra.
Jeff, we talked about this. So the payment is an extra four thousand and change every year.
Why? Why the so much more money?
It's what the cost.
Didn't we you started with an estimate for a smaller tank and then we decided we needed more fewer trips and fill up, so we. We put a.
And we went outside.
Yeah, and that I mean, that's where the money's coming from. We started with the original decision to move the fuel under into the basement with a few tanks down there. It was about twenty thousand dollars. But then it came back. It's like, let's let's move it outside, which was an above ground outside, which was substantially more expensive. And we fell on a twenty uh, two thousand gallon tank buried. That's the cycle of. I know it's a lot of money, but it's the cycle of the project.
Twenty thousand gallon tank?
I'm sorry, two thousand gallon tank. That's twenty. That would be big.
You said two thousand.
So we're gonna have close to fifty or seventy-six thousand dollars in this tank.
Seventy-six thousand?
We have fifty to begin with, right?
No, no, total of forty-six.
Total of forty-six.
Total of forty-six. Total of forty-six thousand.
That's with Fabian putting in the tank. Having everything hooked back up and having this tank closed out.
Yes.
Correct?
Totally.
Okay.
Other question? All over favor?
Aye.
Favor as well? Water connection permit approval.
Yeah, uh, we have a property at fifteen Capitol Hill. When they built the house, they installed the Y from our line. Now they wanna actually finish the connection from the house to uh, the water system. And we need. They've paid their fees. Uh, we just need board approval.
Which where is this now?
Fifteen Capitol Hill.
Unless you want to build it all back for Smithsboro? I don't know. What's your brother's number?
I'm sorry, this is tw- twenty-two and twenty-four Capitol Hill, the project address.
So it's gotta be Smiths. It's gotta be Smiths because the brothers were out there originally, remember?
Right, John and Phil.
So it's not fifteen?
No, I'm sorry. It's twenty-two and twenty-four.
They paid all their fees. Everything's kosher and.
They did. And this is Mr. Roberts, Craig Roberts, who's doing the project.
And we we have capacity?
Yes, we have more than enough capacity.
I mainly to service that section.
Yes.
Perfect.
So I I would just need a motion from the board to allow. Bob to sign the water sewer connection permit application.
I'll make a motion to allow Bob to sign the water sewer connection. At twenty-two and twenty-four Capitol Hill.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And I've had four requests for those, so we should be seeing more come in.
Water connection?
Uh, water and wa- and sewer as well. Yeah, some homes are going up.
More connections, the better.
Yeah.
Okay, fuel beds are off.
Yeah.
Governor Highway Safety Grant. Where we at?
Yep, um, the grant expired on September thirtieth. Um, I got a letter from the Governor's Highway Safety that was sent to the Sheriff's Department. It's authorization to commence grant funded work in advance of fully executed grant agreement. I spoke to the Sheriff's Department and they said due to COVID, the actual physical grant is running behind. To use the current uh, workbooks and the current grant. And this is authorized any payment that we did prior to um, the actual grant coming. He apologized. He said normally things had to be in in July, but with COVID, everything got pushed back to middle of June, which is pushing or excuse me, August. Which is delayed getting the actual physical grant for you guys to look at. I know last year you wanted to look at it prior to approval. I did bring the letter for you guys to look at that it was approved. Lieutenant Gino and the sheriff said there's no changes from last year's grant. Um, so I was looking for continued support on this. Um, would you guys monitor and do that with any time you can pull the plug if you do. And I have the the letter. I don't know if Joe gave you a copy of the letter or not, but I did bring one with me.
So we're. We're operating even being a better safety program again?
It would just allow us to continue to do what we've been doing. And it's really been a benefit. There's only a few people that are working it right now. We're not averaging high expenses on it, but we've really been targeting areas using those funds. Which I think everybody's seen improvements.
Are you using it in Fairhaven?
Yes. Nothing's changed from last year. We haven't uh, been going out. We've been notifying Joe any time we have been out. I can't remember the last time we've actually been out on any.
So you're looking for a motion to continue support for the Governor Highway?
Well, I'm looking. Well, I don't have the physical grant. The grant numbers are on that the piece of paper I gave you for the new grant. They just don't have the physical. Executed grant due to COVID. Last year did not have that letter authorizing um, reimbursement for expenses. Um, and I know you guys had some concerns. So this year I do have the letter, which I did not have last year. So I guess I'm looking for temporary approval from now until the new grant comes in and you guys can review the the actual grant um, at that point.
Is that something we just? Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I think we need a motion and then we can revisit it while we see the.
So I'll I'll make the motion to give temporary approval for the grant while we're waiting.
For the.
Highways.
Highway Safety, the twenty twenty-one grant until the next grant comes for the physical grant comes in and then.
For the twenty twenty-one. Highway Safety Grant until the next one comes in.
They've actually added some different components in there for um, enforcement around um, buses and bus safety and distracted driving. We just haven't had the manpower to do any of it, so we've been pretty limited on our use. If you've monitored what we've been doing, it's been. A thousand to fifteen hundred dollars a month range, sometimes less. Um, I just don't have the manpower at this point to to do anything extra, but it will allow us to target. Um, you know, the bus and the and the crosswalks and the safeties, you know, unloaded, unloading buses um, out on, you know, the routes around the village and the town.
There a second? Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just I wanna see the contract before we do anything. I'm sorry, just I don't. I know we're doing it in Fairhaven, but. I just I disagree with the way sometimes the way it goes on, so. You know, that's always been my feeling. I mean, I'm not. Hurt anybody, but I mean, it's. You know, that's always been my feeling. I mean, I'm not hurt anybody, but I mean, it's.
Should, should be a surprise.
Should be a surprise, right?
I just feel it, you know? I, I don't believe everything is done just strictly in town, so.
And, and I do have the, Mr. Brown, just to reassure you, Joe does get the sheets and we have to.
I, I know. I, I read through your stuff that's in the, that's in the thing.
We have to put on the, where we're working, you can't. And I have tickets that are going to go with it to show that where we are actually in town.
O R one twenty-two is in Fairhaven.
Is what?
It, all they put down is twenty-two A.
Well, again, if you have any concerns, I can show you the traffic tickets.
Well, whatever.
I changed them.
I'm not going to get in a big discussion here. I think you guys are doing a good job. I'm not saying you don't, okay? I just feel it.
I'm just looking to, um, reassure you, I guess, would be.
You, I, I, I believe what you're telling me.
But I, I just want to explain that I do have the traffic tickets.
Yeah.
Um, and all the tickets I, I, since I, I.
I would just like to see them. I'd like to see the contract before we do anything.
Does everybody understand, is there any other questions? Does everybody understand what we're doing here? This is. All right, so this is it.
When does, when does it have to be done by? Can we? Can we give it two weeks so that Jay can look at the contract, so we can all look at the contract?
I, Jeff, I don't have the actual physical contract. I have a letter authorization to continue. The physical contract due to COVID won't be out for a month and a half to actually look at it. So I'm just looking for a temporary stopgap until, from now until the, the physical grant was in your hand. Um, and I do have the letter here if you wanted to look at it.
And Chief, you said that there basically is no change?
I've been advised there's no changes in the grant other than they had added.
Then what we proved.
They had added the other things. Last year, we just never used them. They were all part of the same grant, so you guys approve.
Okay.
Are there questions, comments? Everybody understand that it's a temporary thing pending the arrival of the official grant contract? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Your vote?
Yes.
Three, one.
Thank you.
I heard you say aye. It's three of, you opposed.
I said nay.
Okay, aye, I'm sorry.
Okay. Again, I want, you've, you've done a great job down on South Main Street.
Thank you.
It's, it's, I mean, we still have a few, but it's nowhere near.
I sat there, I sat there, I got called up one morning on eighteen. It was like six, six in the morning, five-thirty to six-thirty, I sat there and I couldn't, they were all thirty, I couldn't get anything.
It's, I, they know that you're there.
Anything I might do.
You know, it's just, to me, it's, it's been great. You've done a great job, Don.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
I appreciate it. I know that.
It's been a little hard. And I get a, I get a, uh, report, um, every morning from all the people coming from New York State, coming to work.
Yeah, Jim Cox was up this morning, Jim Cox was up too.
Yeah, he was.
It makes them, you know, the good part is you haven't set a timeframe when you've been there. You've been at different times, so nobody knows when you're really going to be there. Listen, I even have to watch myself coming out of my car. Trust me. But, I mean, it's just, I think you've done a good job there. I mean, the way you did it, it was a good job.
Thank you.
Before I die of a heart attack.
We will watch.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get it right, 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 it's due, right, come on.
I agree. I agree. All right, uh. Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget overview?
Yeah, uh, so the, the budget was sitting on the, the table, uh, for the board to review. Um, typically, I think the, uh, the board likes to get it and then kind of go through it and then jump in at the next meeting, so that's kind of how I set it up. Um, in your packet, you have the budget, um, the schedule, and then some ancillary information like the paving schedule, the capital improvement budget, um, the grant, the most current grant list, uh, as well as a letter just, uh, detailing kind of the highlights. A little bit, um, just to briefly give an overview. Uh, the proposed budget this year as it sits is with an increase of two-point-eight-nine. Uh, we tried to keep it under three percent, at or three percent, and this was, um, where it fell. I'm not a big fan of just, like, going to three percent. If there's no need for the cash, there's no sense of putting it in there. Um, so that's where that budget landed.
How much of that increase is because of increases in salaries from the union?
Uh.
Do you have any idea what it would be percentage wise?
Uh, no, but we can pull it out. We, we did have a couple of, um, promotions this year and then the salary from the union is two and a quarter, so.
Yes, I mean, we just got to figure that in, we got to figure that part of the two and a half or whatever it was.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, that's.
Labor's always the biggest.
Operating budget didn't go up two and a half. I mean, because, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
When you take out the labor.
I'm trying to be copic here, but I just, it's, we, we have fixed things that we have to do.
Yep.
And then, then we can look at the rest of it afterwards.
Yep.
If we can keep it somewhere in that area, that's not bad.
No, it's, well, there's no sense of bringing a budget of like sixteen percent and then spending time whacking at it.
The, uh, one of the things before you got here was, uh, figuring the, figuring the water, the sewer payment in, in the taxes. And it was eight cents on, on the tax rate.
Eight cents on the tax rate?
Just that, if we did it that way, so.
If you added the entire bond payment?
If you added the entire bond payment, right.
Combinations. But I, yeah, well, that's, again, we can talk about that. But I thought, when we talked about if we had to do something on the tax rate, that there was still going to be a portion put against basic.
Oh, there was.
I mean, so it wouldn't be all, it wouldn't be eight cents. It'd be a little less than that.
Right.
But we have, I mean, that's stuff you got to look at.
That's worst, worst case scenario, and that's what he gave Carl, was Carl asked that question at the, at the meeting, Carl Scott. So anyways, that's.
A lot of things have changed. We'll, we'll know more what we can deal with after election anyways. I mean, if this goes through, we got something to work with. If it doesn't, well, then we got to go back to the drone. Unfortunately.
Exactly.
Could I get this sheet to Carl?
Yes. Um, a couple of highlights. Uh, so since I've been here, I've, I've always felt that, um, infrastructure is, is one of the most important things to deal with in a town. Uh, you always hear politicians say, I'm going to improve infrastructure, but, but then there's always that dearth of, of funding towards it. Uh, this budget, much like the last two or three years, three or four years, um, is heavy in DPW. Uh, they see an increase of ten-point-six-five. That is offset by reduction in, um, the general fund budget of, the O one O general fund budget. Some, some things you'll notice. There, there is a small increase in paving of five thousand only. Uh, there's a request for a new mower, which is driving up O three O. Uh, the mower in the park is on fifteen years now. In O one O, there's also, I think, eleven thousand five hundred and four economic development. Uh, we talked about finding a way to attract businesses to our downtown area. Uh, one of those was trying to find a way to sub- subsidize rent. That money is in this budget. Uh, the police department did add a little, added nine thousand dollars for that dispatch fee. That may show up, and we didn't want to be blindsided by it. Will that be enough?
I don't know. I just was trying to come up with like a minor ten thousand dollar placeholder.
Yeah.
I don't have any idea. It's not gone, like, Bob Helm, last time I talked to him, he said that that bill passed with that in there, but the House Ops Committee was going to take it out and it was, that part was going to go back to the, them to decide if there's going to be a fee or not, or set a rate structure to go that way.
Very good for that.
Bob seemed to think that there would be a small, and he said, but what he, what he got was a lot of the towns are represented by, are small, um, throughout the state, and they very clearly heard my voice. They, they resonated with us being a small municipality. Um, so we'll see what happens with that. But there's been no more.
So, uh, in O one O, congratulations, you paid off your fire truck. That payment is now out of the budget.
Don't tell them that.
Well, there's already big plans they knew two years ago.
Uh, we don't need, we don't need new fire truck.
Uh, and added to the debt management was the fuel tank loan, and that's a five-year loan at zero percent interest.
That's in there.
That's, that's already in there. I think what's, besides not, besides saying what's there, um, I think it's important to say what's not there, because we, we do have to prioritize.
I just read through your list and felt it's not there.
Yeah. Um, so Town Hall Woodwork, the scones?
The woods? Help, sorry, you're talking about.
The woods, the, the wood.
The sawing?
Yeah, up in, I don't know what the word is for Town Hall. Um, that's a fifty thousand dollar repair job. Um, that's not in here. Uh, the website, which is in bad need of replacement, um, that's also not in here. Police Department porch is not in here. It had come up to have a home repair loan, and I don't know if that was just, I imagined that, or if we talked about it, but we didn't put any money in there for that either. Rec director, full, an all-year, part-time rec director's not in here. We've been kicking that around for a few years. We pulled that. And the clock for downtown, which was kicked around, um, this year, that's also not in there, so. And that's.
There's a project for Murphy.
What's your name? Jerry Miller's wife, down at the bank, told me just recently, um, that the clock at the bank, she says, that's coming soon. Cause I had, I had written a letter too.
It's only been five, five years, six years?
Oh, more than that, yeah.
Been a while, but I don't.
Peter, obviously, I guess it just changed a little. Carol would know.
She said, we'll get there.
Carol would know because she's been.
Cause I asked her, who could I write to? You know, the, the highest mucky-muck, and she says, we'll get there. So I don't know.
All right, so we will take a look. Get out the pencil. Give that. We start next week, or two weeks?
Yes. Twenty, yeah.
Twenty weeks.
All right.
Eve up a bus run, but that's what we're sharing here.
All right, um, anything in the, uh, in the parking lot that's jumping out of this?
One quick question about the alley, the closure. Could it be just done, like, for this winter, just to have a snowball path through the middle of it so we can walk through it? Instead of going in there and spreading the salt against the buildings again? You know, not totally, just close it for the winter?
Let me, uh.
See if that's something we can do? I mean, we got a, we got a snowboard. You can go right down through and make a four-foot path so people can walk down through there. You know, I mean, it just, it's doing a number in them buildings, that salt.
No, I know.
And it's, it's.
I mean, it's one way, but still, I mean, I don't, the traffic itself doesn't bother me. It's just the fact that the salt and the sand.
Yeah.
It's just, I mean, cause you can't, there's no way it's, the sander spreads it just so, so wide and it, the, the alley isn't that wide. That's the problem.
Won't, won't the mountainous snow cause possible water ice damage?
See, I don't know. I don't know if that would, I don't know if it'd bother them, whether it bothered or not.
Which way can you blow it?
I mean, if you could blow it right straight ahead.
Other, other guy's building.
You could blow it right straight ahead.
Depending on the snow, because at some point you're.
Down the sheen, down the sheen we got, you'd be able to blow it six, sixty, seventy feet, I would think. So you can blow it, just go right down through and blow it in the back and then blow it off. Once you get to the other side, it'll burn.
Yeah, let me, uh, let me ask DPW and see what suggestions they have.
When you, when we close, if you don't plow the alley, you still got some people living further down. Is there a place that they drive in and they back out, or is there a turn?
Well, you can turn around right there behind a, right a brewery's going to be. There's one there.
Okay. Okay, so turning around is not going to be an issue? Okay.
Yeah, let me.
Just a, just a.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me check on it.
We keep it plowed and don't sand it. Unless it, unless you keep it plowed and sand it with the, with the sidewalk sander.
Let me ask, we'll get, we'll pull up some options and see.
Because you could go back and forth and just drop the sand on it, so, you know, somebody wouldn't fall.
Yeah.
The salt's killing everything in there. It's, I mean, it's just so close, you know? If you sell the building, I don't care.
Anything else in the parking lot? If not, moving on. Round table?
Jay? Okay, yeah, a couple of things. Um, is there any way they could go up, there's a manhole going up to the high school. And that's a deep one. It's.
A mechanic?
Yeah.
That's deep.
If they could go up and, and fill that one in.
I'll get them.
And I'll tell you, you're never going to satisfy a person on South Main Street, or North Main Street. Because what he's hearing is just because the manholes are a little low and people are hitting them.
He still, he hit center, he hit center.
Oh, he did. Oh, well, then, fine.
I get along really well with Ray. He's a really nice guy.
Even the new one that they put in, that's quieter, but the one right across the road from his house?
Hmm.
You know, maybe if they put a little, a little hot or cold patch in that, it might, it might take the noise out of it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And, uh, the new one that they put in up on South Main Street, I don't know why they put that one in, but that's a side point. That's louder than the one on the other end. Because the cover's loose. And you, when somebody hits it, you hear the cover move.
On South Main?
Up, up by Academy.
Oh, really? Damn. I thought that looked good too.
No, it looks good. It's smooth.
Yeah.
But if they hit the cover, you hear the cover move. So I'm afraid it, it hits just right and will pop it out. And you don't mind if I put gravel on the other one, do you?
I'm sorry?
You don't mind if I covered that other one down there with gravel in front of my private?
No, yeah, do what you need.
They still hit that one pretty hard.
The one on, just further down, like closer to you?
Just before Rob's up. It's, because it's low, that's where you're getting your noise from. If you tighten the cab up, the, the top of it, you don't hear the, the cab move.
Yeah.
Cause he would don't put that stuff around it. But, you know, I know they hate to chop them out after. Put those cold, a cold patch or something down there. That'd take the noise out of it.
All right, let me get with the guy.
There's a lot of them. You can do that with it. But, I mean, I understand where you're coming from about time consumption with chopping them out, but, man, some of them are pretty. You get a truck with little logs on it, it kind of rattles them.
And, but to that point, I know I look on, on Fourth Street when we, we put cold patch on top of those, and, and we don't have big trucks. What's hurting us on Washington is those big trucks that are, that are, that are hitting those. But we have, we have cold patch on top of almost every one of the holes that we, on, on Fourth Street, that are left. So it just doesn't, what I'm looking to say, we don't seem to be consistent in power.
It's, I understand, you know, you understand what you're saying.
I, I do this, um, I'm hesitant to just throw a cold, to ask them to throw a cold patch on all these, um, I, since I've been, and I know all towns are different, but, apparently that's kind of an old, an old way to do things. Um, if you drive around just any, anywhere and just take a look, um, you see some with cold patch. But when you drive through Polley and you go through, uh, Rutland, they're not, they're not slathering cold patch over everything. There is a little bump and you get it. But it's, it's typically not the, the, the thing that we have, that we do here. It's not the, uh, trouble everywhere else.
It's just that, two only ones that really seem to be bothering is where the heavy traffic is.
Like on Main Street?
Yeah. And, you know, South Main Street, Washington Street.
It's where the eighteen wheeler school.
Yeah, exactly. It's when they.
That one on, that one on, uh, going up to the high school, they really, I'd like to see them try to do something with that one.
That was deep.
Okay, um, other than that, there was a donation given toward the playground from the Cassleton Legion. Um, we would, they voted on it last week. Uh, I know the S A L gave three thirty-four. I'm not exactly sure what the Legion, I think they're going to try to match it for a thousand dollars, but I'm not sure. But there's three organizations, the Auxiliary, S A L, and Legion. Yeah, cause we got a letter from Murphy wanting that we donate.
Yeah.
And so I thought it was, you know, pretty good that they donated something for Fairhaven.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, uh, but anyways, I don't think that's gone out yet, so, I mean, I don't think they've received it yet, but that was, I know there was a couple of checks written. I don't know if they sent them to them yet or not.
I haven't heard, but.
But it, it'd be, if they didn't get all of it, it'd be just under nine hundred. If they got it all, it'd be a thousand, so.
That's wonderful.
Now, when, last week, we went, we did the twenty thousand dollars matching fund. When they continue raising money, will that just go in, into fund, or will, or what will that happen to? It won't make a difference of what we donated, or what we put in for the grant, right?
Um, no.
It goes into a separate playground fund?
It, it just goes into the, to the playground account, and then, yeah, and then we apply for whatever amount we apply for, for the, excuse me, for the, uh, the playground equipment, and it just, yeah. So we, we may use less match depending.
That's what I'm saying. So the more they make, is the less match we have to do, correct?
Yeah, or we could just get a bigger playground, I guess. Depends on what you want to do.
You know, I don't, I think it's great that they've gone as far as they've gone. I mean, it's just, uh, you can't, you can't knock what we've, what they've raised in last year here. I mean, it's unbelievable.
Like twenty thousand dollars, I think. It's, it's a ton of money.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic. That's all I got.
Jeff, anything for roundtable?
Uh, just want to know how we're making out on the firehouse beam. Did I miss that in Joe's?
No, um, I have. Yeah, I, I emailed him this yesterday afternoon, in fact, to ask, and he says he's still waiting for the, uh, engineer report to come in. I did ask him, was Mike, was the claim going to be denied, because he's making me nervous, uh, and he said no. But I don't, it doesn't, it's not all that reassuring until I get a check in my hand.
Okay.
Engineer report for what?
The, the cracked beam in the firehouse.
And you mentioned the elevator, USDA gave us approval on the elevator project. Um, we talked about that a few weeks ago, and there was some concerns on the sprinkler and whether we could actually use the space. Uh, is that all tied up? We got that figured out?
I don't understand the question.
I think Jay brought up a fairly valid point that he didn't want to go forward with the elevator until we knew we could use the space. Jay, I don't want footwork, so you may.
No, no, that's what I, that's what, yeah, yeah, that's, that's the way it was.
Yep, so I, so there is no construction happening today, maybe not next month or even two months. If I pulled the plug on this now, you're not, there, there will be nothing. This, the project will stall.
I don't want to pull plug. I just wondered how, how the other side was going.
The, the other side's still creeping along at its nails pace.
Okay.
Now, see, cause my feeling is, if the report from the back, we can't use upstairs, why are we going to put an elevator in? And I don't want to, I don't want to nip it either, but I mean, we got to be looking, we got to make sure we're not going to be throwing money.
Well, it's not that you won't be able to use it, it's just, there, there's going to have to be a repair done. It's just what it boils down to. It's, it's not you can't, it's just you have to make it so it works. Um, whether the insurance company pays for it, or we find another way, I guess, is what it boils down to, but, um, there, unless we can dig up two million dollars to build a new town hall, this seems to be the most cost-effective way to do things.
That shouldn't be difficult. How's Murphy?
Yeah.
So let's go with, it's, if everything equal.
Yeah.
Perspective on it that makes sense.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, that's it. Thanks, Joe.
You bet.
Um, I got one complaint about, uh, the, um, the R C fires being a little, little strong-armed in their, uh, where they're putting people that walk up there that are, so I'm not exactly sure what happens, what happened, but they were, that, I guess they have a sign directing people away from their area, you know, or something, and, and I'm going to go up the next time they're up there just to see if the sign says. But, uh, if we could talk to, to Fred and say that they're, they're guests and they're not, they're not the boss of things. That the people that go up there use that for recreational purposes are very residents and taxpayers and don't want, I mean, that, those guys have been great neighbors. I don't want them to get going on any, any kind of a feud, but I just want to make sure that they understand that they have to share that place.
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk to Fred.
I, you know, and you, they, they do a lot of work up there, so I can understand them wanting to feel like they've got some sort of dog in the fight, and they do, but they're still, they're still guests.
The only thing I'd add to that is that I can understand them putting a sign up so people don't walk down the runway if they're flying the planes. I mean, I, that I can understand, but if they're trying to keep mother whole space, because you can walk down along the side of the runway without any trouble, I mean, you know, but if they're flying the planes, I understand them not wanting to have people walking there. But just, like Bob said, just ask them what the deal was and what's going on and just.
Let's be good neighbors.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they are normally, they almost always are, never have any problems on it, and it just may be somebody was a little sensitive that day or something, but whatever, I want to make sure that we're, that they get, they need to be polite to people. Um, the other thing is, uh, I was at, I was, I was up north this weekend at Essex, and they had a, a thing. They had all the town vehicles all cleaned up and, you know, and they let kids come in. Climb all over them, crawl all over them. They had a, they, they did, like, they had a bunch of, they had a bunch of different-sized basketballs and balls and stuff, and they let the kids throw them in the back, one of the dump trucks, and then they dumped the balls out and let the kids all, after they shut it down, let the kids do it again. They had a hay ra, hay wa, hay wagon, you know, with the tractor and, and dragged the wagon around with a few bales. A pretty good public relations, I thought. I don't know that it's, it's probably a little late in the season to figure on it, but maybe springtime.
Sure.
Think about that, it, I mean, those, it looked like the guys were having fun. They were, you know, they were, they were working on Saturday. I'm sure they didn't tickle their fancy too much, but they, it was, uh, the town, the townspeople looked like, you know, and they didn't do anything fancy. I mean, they just, they let, most of the vehicles were just there for you to walk and look at them, but then they had a couple of things that, uh, that they just, you know, did a little interactive stuff, but.
I'm going to ask you a John question now.
Yeah, that's good.
Did they wipe the balls down after you think somebody was done?
No.
Did they wipe the truck down?
Here's what they did. Here's what they did. They, they have.
Gloves on?
Yep. What they did was, they, everybody had masks. You had to have a mask to go there, even the little kids. Um, they offered you a wipe if you wanted one.
To wipe the vehicle.
To wipe the ball down if you didn't want it going, and they, um, they went around and, and periodically cleaned everything, you know, just sprayed it all down, everything. So that's what they did. And, and everybody seemed to be satisfied with that, and, and everybody kept their distance.
Sounds like you follow, sounds like you follow precautions. I mean, he did what.
Yeah, they, it was, you know, they, there was one guy that, uh, was trying to get his grandson to throw a thing into the, into the back of the truck and ran over another little girl. I didn't mean it.
It happens.
I do have one more. In the paper today, Castleton, um, Rutland, West Rutland, I think, I can't remember the other town, but they got certificates to give to, they, some kind of money that came from the state, where if people spent thirty bucks in a store, they got ten dollars off. They got a card.
Yeah.
How come we weren't, didn't get involved in something like that?
Uh, it was a state program, and I think we did blast it out on, on Facebook. It went fast.
It ran, it ran out.
It ran, it didn't run out. Like, that morning it ran out.
Yeah, but was that for the, was that for the ten dollar certificate?
Are you?
This is in the Rowan Herald today.
So the state was giving you, giving Vermonters money to just spend in local, at local businesses?
Yeah, you had to spend thirty dollars, and if you spent the thirty dollars, you had a ten dollar gift certificate that did knock ten dollars off your purchase.
This, this was something that, that the Chamber in Reddick with Lyle Jepson got together with some towns of Pontley, Castleton, and, and West, and, and the merchants, and, and they had to sign up, and each town got, got something like ten, ten thousand dollars, uh, in that process. I, I, I read it, and I looked at it and said, don't, wasn't aware, I, that it was going on until I saw it. So I'm saying I, whether, whether, I don't know if we got an invitation to join.
One of the words you mentioned was Reddick. That's probably the reason why.
But well, it's that combination of that group, but I know it was, they're the ones who.
It was quite an article. I mean, it sounded like, and they gave, and then they listed all the businesses that you could use them in, you know? Castleton had a lot of them. I mean, there was.
I, I was surprised when I saw it, because as an economic development committee, we were looking at what they were doing up north, and we were kicking around a, a Fairhaven dollars thing to see if we'd go out and talk with merchants and see if we could subsidize something so we can get people to spend like that. And when I saw they had something already going on, it's, uh, somehow I think it was a miss. I don't think it was intentional by them, but I think, uh, might be worthwhile to reach out to them.
You can tell, you can tell Lyle that, or I will.
Oh, I, 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 I think it was just a miss. I think it was a miss.
Again.
Geez, he was, he worked here how many years?
Yeah, I know.
Worked here?
He was a principal.
He was a principal.
He was a high school principal.
At the high school.
Twice principal for a long time, then he was principal.
Okay, that's all I got. Um, financial reports, expenditure and revenue reports, Jeff?
So, uh, motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, five hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
Yep, I'll second it, but that includes two hundred and ninety-five thousand or something for the school, right?
No.
School payment, yeah.
Five hundred and something?
Five hundred and something.
Okay, so that's, that's included in there, okay.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the checkbook status is seventy thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and eighteen cents after all that.
Surprised there's anything in it. Thank you. All right, do we have an executive session?
We do.
Entertained a motion?
Entertained that motion.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session for attorney client, Communications one, V S A three thirteen A one.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed, we're in executive session as soon as we break down.